I pledge the flag of the United States of America. And to our republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Just a friendly reminder for all of those who are attending. The meeting is being recorded and all of your comments and/or questions will become part of the public record. So with that, the first item of business is open forum. And so we have a couple of things for open forum. First, even though he's not here tonight because he's enjoying the warm climes of Florida, we'd like to recognize Eric Hydeman tonight for receiving the credentialed manager designation from the International City Council Management Association. This is rather a prestigious award. It recognizes Eric for his more than 10 years of service in municipal government. Before he came to Westford, he was in Ashland, where he worked there, and then joined us here in Westford. You know, I think when I, I think people should be aware that while Eric doesn't always appear at our select board meetings, he is very active and very involved behind the scenes and that many projects here in Westford would not come to fruition if it were not for Eric. Many committees could not do their work if it were not for Eric's support. Those include 51 Main Street, 12 North Main Street, the Town Farm Road, and just a myriad of others. In addition, he has been lead on obtaining now, I believe, hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants and in green, green grants and environmental grants. So it's my pleasure and the board's pleasure to recognize Eric and to say thank you to him for all of his hard work and for all of his efforts on behalf of the town. So, thank you, Eric, in abstention. Then I think the other announcement was a congratulations. The Westford swim team is the, I believe, the DCL championships, won the DCL championship. And I know that this is not the first time they've done that because we've recognized them in the past, but I can't remember when the last time was, probably two or three years ago. But anyway, congratulations to those young ladies. And then I would just, as a final note for my, what I have for open forum, as everybody knows, last week was a sad week for all of us here in Westford. And last weekend was both the wake and the funeral for Captain James Barrett. To allow all of our firefighters to attend both the wake and the funeral, mutual aid and support from the surrounding towns came to Westford to man our stations during that time. So on behalf of the select board, I believe that those stations included Lowell Air, Acton, Tinsborough, and I think that's all. And if I've missed anyone, I apologize. But the board would like to say thank you very much to all of you for covering our stations and for allowing our firefighters to participate in both the wake and the funeral and to mourn the loss of their colleague. We very much appreciate it. And it goes without saying, of course, that we will, should it ever happen, and we hope it doesn't, be there to support you and your firefighters and first responders as well. So, Scott?
Yeah, just in case when I was listening, you forgot Groton. So thank you to Groton, too.
I'm sorry. Thank you to Groton.
And this, I would also add, you know, we, we've had a couple of, of, one large snowstorm, one storm that went from rain to snow, which is just really nasty for road conditions. And Westford Highway, Part 1 Dagaskil, Westford Public Works, really came through. It was very impressive, especially that one that went from rain to snow with, you know, no chemicals down, and then you have to go out and treat it and keep it open. And it was a great job. It was a really, really great job. So, thank you to those. If you're listening, if you're not, hopefully you'll hear from us. Yeah, thank you for your work. And sorry, but probably singing again Friday, it sounds like.
I was just gonna say they're gonna be back out, it sounds like, on Friday. Okay, anybody from the board have anything else for open forum? I don't see any. Unless Scott is sure, hand up for something else, or you just haven't taken it down yet. Ah, okay. All right. Our 7:05 PM item is our consent agenda. We have a request to approve the following. The Westford Boy Scouts of America Troop 437 Spring Bike and Sporting Goods Sale. The applicant is Andrea Weed. The date is Saturday, April 30th, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Then we have, and these are, both of these are on the Town Common. We have the Annual Westford Strawberries and Arts Festival. The applicant is the First Parish Church United on Saturday, June 18th, from 6:30 to 4:30. Then we have the following banner requests. The Westford Boy Scouts of America Troop 437 Spring Bike and Sporting Goods Sale. The applicant is Andrea Weed. The date is Saturday, April 23rd through Tuesday, May 3rd, in front of the J V Fletcher Library. And then the Annual Westford Strawberries and Arts Festival. The applicant is the First Parish Church United. The date is Saturday, June 11th through Tuesday, June 21st. Location is in front of the Abbott School. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're at our 7:10 PM item, which is an update on the progress of the access to town meeting. So I believe that's Diane Wood.
Okay, Diane, you should better unmute yourself now.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Mike, do you have the presentation?
I do.
Okay. Since we've been in, the committee has been in existence now for about five months, we thought appropriate to share the progress being made. Thank you, Mike. So we can go to the next slide. And let's revisit how we got here. So the challenge in the background is attendance at town meeting. And I think you can see those numbers over to the right. So we've got 2017 through 2021. In 2020 and 21, we were out on the field. So that would justify why some of the numbers are low. In 2017, the 6.7% of the registered voters was due to that year being the school override, the two and a half override. In 2019, the numbers were a little higher because we had Slider, we had Stormwater Management, we had 66, 68 Boston Road. So those were some of the higher visibility articles that were on the warrant those years. So clearly, among many things, the issues and the articles that are on the warrant drive attendance and impact attendance. And you've been seeing 2017, the annual town meeting was held over two days. So there was a Saturday meeting and then it rolled over onto Monday for, specifically for the override and the energy behind the override that we were voting on. Next slide, Mike? So the charter was established in September last year. I'm not going to read the words, but in effect, the committee was charged to investigate, research, and recommend. So we're in the process of investigating, pulling research together with the goal of making a recommendation to select board about how we can indeed increase attendance at town meeting. So the goal is obviously to increase attendance. Mike? We have, currently, we have 15 formal committee slots, 11 of which are filled. And part of this meeting tonight will be another request to reduce the number of members on the committee. It's been a challenge getting a quorum, as I think some of the larger committees have also experienced. People are involved in a lot of activities in town and sometimes overcommitted. So we're doing a lot of juggling. So that'll come up. But we have 11 members right now engaged, and our town moderator is our guest participant. Next, Mike? The approach on this is we first wanted to develop a branding. We want to get the visibility of the committee being out there. The process was to conduct a 365-degree circle. So we wanted to first get the internal committee to do some brainstorming about what they thought some of the issues were. Then we moved out to the Westford community itself with our Westford survey that many of you have seen. Then expand that outwards to a town questionnaire to include some of the market basket communities that we sent the questionnaire out to. And the last part of this was to explore remote participation, which seemed to be very intriguing to a lot of people. A lot of voters in town with crazy schedules and other activities. Many people asked, why, why can't we be creative? Why can't we come up with another way to have our voices, share our voices and our votes without having to sit through a long, complicated, sometimes, meeting? Next, Mike? Mike?
Hang on a minute, he's coming. I think.
Something stuck, or?
Not sure.
Okay.
Mike, are we, is the slideshow stuck? I think we, did we just, I think, did?
We just lost the.
We just lost Mike.
I'm following him.
I can try and, I can share my screen and pull up the slides.
Thank you, Nina.
Yeah.
Why don't you go ahead, Anita, because he didn't pick up then, but he might have lost his connection or something.
Can you see this?
Yep. So let's move forward.
Okay.
To the branding slide.
There you go.
Yep.
Excellent. So this is our, this is our branding. Megan E. Croft designed the branding so that we could use on our flyers. We used on the survey when we publicized it, and will continue to use it when needed and as appropriate. Next slide. Anita, please. Oh, there's another. Okay, so Mike, there are two other documents here that, that identify. Anita, do you have that other document by any chance?
Is it the brainstorming session categorized?
Yes. There you go.
So this, this was the first exercise that we did internally to get to solicit input from our own committee as to what do you see some of the issues? And you could drill, drill down a little, Anita. So you see logistics, you see transportation, you see childcare. Education was a big one. People don't know why they come, inform they need information that's easy to understand. You can keep on drilling down, Anita. Lack of prior knowledge, communication and publicity, not enough of it. They want to know why new residents don't understand more. The information is too dry. This, this was just simply unfiltered, you know, information that came from internal committee itself. So you could see the, some, some of the areas fall under the category, a lot of them, of communication and education. A lot of people not understanding the process, why it's important, and why they should attend. So I just wanted to give you a snapshot of that. So that was the first exercise. And we can go back to the PowerPoint, Anita, and the next slide. So we've got three working groups that were established. The Community Input Working Group, which was the survey, a questionnaire for other towns inflicting data from them, and then the third working group, which was Remote Participation Working Group, to explore other ways, to other creative ways. This is a longer approach, a longer term approach, and not meant to be in the very, very short term. But a lot of people and a lot of voters are very interested to know, what else can we do? There must be some way to be able to balance and have our voices heard. Next slide, Anita. So the Westford Community Input, this was the survey that, that, you know, I hope you've all filled out. We rolled out in mid-January, so it's been about more than four weeks now. We had over 800 responses. And we communicated all over town. Flyers in wicked local, Action Unlimited articles. We had hot copy surveys at Cameron Fletcher Town Hall, Roden Bush. Angela did PSAs, and many of you did announcements of your own during government meetings. So we were trying to reach every population as to how you communicate, communicate in person, pick up a hot copy flyer, are you mostly an online person, voted this site and fill it out that way. The focus was to keep the, the survey short, concise, and quick. It was not meant to identify, to actually weigh in on which changes we're actually going to make. In doing the research, in talking to the leads and our counterparts, there are various different opinions as to which way people want to go, which way voters want to choose. So we first wanted to better understand what was keeping them from attending town meeting. Next slide, Anita, thank you. That's the survey, which I hope all of you are familiar with. And this is an eye chart. However, we did reach a good distribution of residents, you know, regarding who comes and who doesn't come, you know, to town meeting, and that's what the charts represent. The majority of those people rarely go or never go. So if you tally up the rarely and never, it's 63.8% of those people. So those people actually responded. So they wanted to hear their voices, they wanted their voices known as to why they didn't go. Having said all that, you know, the four top challenges for not attending are at the bottom there. So conflicts with any events, work, school, activities, how long the meeting is, some of which we have control over, some of which we don't. It is not challenging for me. We'll have to dig into that a little deeper. And then childcare. The second working group, led by Christina, was reaching out to the Mass Moderates Association, cities and towns in the state, and sending out a questionnaire to gather their input and maybe leverage some special ideas or strategies or tips or what they do to increase attendance. And that was, that was the goal, that is the goal, and that's being worked on as we speak. And the next slide, Anita. That was the introduction to the town meeting survey. So it's just stating, our goal is to increase attendance, and we're looking for your input. And Anita, that's another document.
Is this the right one?
Yeah, I think that looks right.
There you have the questions that were, that were sent to the, the communities. So how often do you hold a special town meeting? When do you hold it? Is it consistent? How do you advertise? Do you limit the time in minutes of public comments, which was an interesting one? How do you communicate? Do you provide any sort of frequently asked questions? So really trying to get a sense, what do you do, communities? And we're still pulling in the information, you know, from, from that. And we've gotten, I think, 40, 47 responses. However, many of those were, were not what I call market basket communities to Westford. So for example, Chatham sent back a lot of detail in their process and a lot of data. However, as some of you may know, Chatham is, has a much different demographic for, for a population. It's, in some cases, considered a retirement community. So that was not really a fair representation of what, what they do. We could probably pick up some ideas and leverage that. But we look, we're really looking for more input from our market basket communities. There's similar intended spirits to our size, to our form of government, to our voters, and try to glean any input from them. Thanks, Anita. Next. Back to the PowerPoint. Next. And last but not least is the Remote Participation Working Group. So this is a longer term approach. And the approach here was to understand what creative ways can we look at in, in research as we move forward into the town meeting of the future to make, to make voting at town meeting easier for, for people. And that would obviously mean change, potential changes in local, state, federal laws, maybe changing. And that was the, the last working group. So along with this, communications and education seem to be the biggest theme from the input that, that we've received today. The committee's charter was to investigate, research, and, and make recommendations to the select board. So I would like the select board to think about, who'll be responsible for actually implementing, implementing the recommendations that we end up making. So we would, we would like a view for the select board to think about that as we move and complete this event. Are there any questions?
I think they've done a good thorough job of this.
Thank you.
I sat on that board a long time ago, and we were changing the date, and then we'd be looking at the same thing, and we had the same issues, you know, that if you had a town of 400 people in it, 300 of them would show up at town meeting. Have 20,000, 400 to show up again. I mean, it just seems like that's the way things happen. And I, I think a lot of the ideas that you've surfaced, they look very promising. So I look forward to seeing the results.
We're not looking.
Well, wait, wait, Diane. Scott? Scott?
I, I had a question on the childcare question, I guess. So childcare as obstacle could mean we don't offer it, and if we had it, they would come. And childcare could mean that they have children at home that they want to, you know, I guess, leave at home to, you know, to play, and they can't come because of what we do. So I guess, is there any way of, from the surveys, could you tell, what, what, when we had, we had offered, the problem is, I believe, is the year of the teacher override. So you can't tell much. You already had a boost in attendance from the event itself that may have been happened because of childcare. But I guess the, the question remains, if we offered childcare, would that increase attendance, or would that, you know, just be ignored because people want to actually have, you know, home care?
I wouldn't disagree with you, Scott. We'll, we'll be drilling down on that. A couple of things I can add, though, however, I, I think it's clear, I, I think there's an understanding that if there's an evening meeting, if, if annual town meeting, it will be in the evening, there are fewer parents, if any, that, that would want to send their children in the middle of March or the, or the end of March, if we keep that date in, you know, to, to childcare arrangements. So, so it varies. And then you'd have to think about how many parents would, would really come. So, so we had, I had been involved in a previous exercise in looking at some of the details in this. And we would obviously have people sign up in advance and see if that, if that helped and, and see how many people would go. If it's under five, then, then you'd have to weigh, is all the effort important enough to actually implement this? So there's still a lot of questions on that, and we'll explore all the things that you just discussed a little more, in a little more detail.
Thanks.
You know, Diane, one of the things I'd be curious about, sort of a global thing, I know in the, the questions that you sent to the other towns, one of the, the questions that I didn't see is, I'd really be interested to know what percentage of these communities' resident, you know, voters, what percentage actually attend town meeting? And does their percentage, you know, is it equivalent to what we're seeing? Is it better? Is it worse? And if it's better, then obviously, what are they doing perhaps that we're not doing? Or what can we learn from them to increase our attendance? So I'd be interested in, in knowing that.
So I think there were some questions aimed at that. Christina Green is leading that. Christina, I'm catching you off guard. Are you on the call?
She is.
Mike, would you like to?
She's got her hand up. It's okay, Diane. We got it.
I think I'm unmuted. Am I?
Yes, you are, Christina.
Yeah, Andrea, I had the same question. We didn't put it on the survey exactly because we wanted people to sort of be able to go through and answer the questions easily. But that is one of the things that we're asking as we do follow up. Because I, I had the same question, you know, if they have a lot of people, then we want to see what they're doing. But if they don't, then maybe there's nothing to learn there.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Scott?
Yeah, I just had one other, this is more a comment to the question. It's probably a, a comment for the, the team looking into remote participation. But we actually sort of have an ongoing experiment right now, which is our board meetings that are occurring via the webcast at, at the evening. So I'm kind of curious if we actually were to, able to, you know, interview or, you know, survey some of the folks that we've got, you know, they've, they give us email addresses, right, to get on. If we could sort of survey them and say, you know, did you used to go to the select board meetings, or the planning board meetings, or school committee meetings? And if not, is the online format more attractive to you? That might be evidence towards remote participation, proving attendance at town meeting.
So your question, Scott, is asking, asking some attendees who attend virtually, why they attended virtual, or did they prefer attending virtually? Is that?
Yes, yeah. I mean, anecdotally, you know, we, we understand that there are people listening into these meetings, town employees, for example, that may not even be, you know, in a, in a, in a Westford Cat town, so they couldn't listen to us normally, and now they can. Others are people who don't, wouldn't want to go to town hall, but want to speak out loud. So they weren't on, you know, they're on WCAT, they could watch it, but they can't opine on WCAT. So I guess, you know, the question would be, are there people who are finding these online meetings to be useful, you know, for commentary that they wouldn't have been able to do, or would have wanted to do when we were in person? That being the case, would tell you something perhaps about town meeting being remote versus in person, and would you get more people joining you online?
Thank you.
Anita?
Yeah, I, I was just curious if any other towns tried to leverage ballots a little bit more, if there's something that's not time sensitive, if there's a way to just, you know, kind of line up some of the, like, petitions that are not, you know, not about zoning or something, that could align with ballots, and then that shortens the meeting a little bit. I just wonder if there's a, a hybrid that way, where we might be able to use the ballots a little bit more for, like, local elections and stuff?
We'll, we'll probably look into that because wrapping up the other towns, the survey questionnaire, the, the team will be speaking to some of those towns directly. So that'll be an opportunity to explore that a little more. And the whole, the whole ballot topic has surfaced. People asking, why can't we just go to the polls and, and vote on these articles? So at a real high level, in general, people are, are exploring and wondering why that can't be done. So at a real high level, in general, people are exploring and wondering why that can't be done.
I forgot to start it with, thank you for all of the work that the committee has been doing. Obviously, there's a lot here. I mean, this is a very thorough presentation. And I know this is a really big committee, and you all have been working really hard on this. So thank you.
Tom Barry has his hand up. So, Mike, can you unmute him?
Can you hear me?
We can, Tom.
Okay, good evening. Yeah, just a very brief comment on the remote participation that I think Anita just asked about. We are looking at other towns. We've talked to a few other towns that do some remote participation. The town of Lexington, for example, for the last couple of years has conducted their meeting now that's town representative, a representative form of government. But they have done that totally remotely, and it has worked extremely well. That was approved by the governor during the pandemic, and I think that's going away as of April 1st. We've also talked to the town of Salem, New Hampshire, which is very similar to Westford. And Salem, New Hampshire, actually does their final votes by ballot. So they have meetings in January and February. They recently had a meeting, which I couldn't attend, but it was to answer any questions. People were able to call in and make motions, or I forget what you call it, but adjustments to motions. And all of that happens remotely in January and February. And then in March, at their town, when they vote, everything is on the ballot. I think last year, they had something like, I don't know, thirty or forty warrant articles on the ballot, which were deeply discussed in the January and February meetings. So just to answer your question, Anita, we're looking into that. It's very interesting. They get a lot more participation doing that, and the residents seem to love it.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, let me echo Anita's thanks to this committee for all the work you're doing and all the information that you're gathering for us. I guess, Diane, what you would like us to vote on tonight is to decrease your membership from fifteen to eleven, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to decrease the membership of the Access to Town Meeting Committee from fifteen members to eleven?
The most.
Second? All those in favor? Anita? Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, thank you very much. We look forward to hearing from you again as you move forward with all of your research and investigation.
Andrea, thanks, everybody.
Okay. We are at our 7:20 PM item now, which is a request for support from town moderator on the use of electronic voting tabulators at town meeting. So. Angela?
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Yep.
Just before I begin, I want to also say I've been attending all of the meetings of the ATM committee, and they are really, really a great group. They're committed, enthusiastic, available, and they're really going to come up with some good ideas, I think. So I am here again. A few weeks or months ago, I asked if you would support me in an effort to examine the idea of using electronic vote tabulators to count votes at town meeting. Since that time, I have done a few things, starting with reviewing material that was available on the Mass Moderators Association's site from other towns who've implemented electronic vote tabulators at their town meetings. Along with Mike Wells and Tom Barry and Steve Edwards, I have attended demonstrations from three of, I think there were four companies, three of the four companies that provide systems like this to various communities in Massachusetts. And each of those demonstrations was over an hour. Everybody asked questions. Thank you so much to Tom and Steve and Mike for being there because they have all the technical expertise that I don't have. I also did a little research on my own with other town moderators and looking at various information on the web about what other communities' experience has been with electronic vote tabulators. And after doing all that, I am 100% convinced that this is something that needs to be brought to our town meeting. So that is an agreement that was reached with Tom and Mike and Steve. We all thought without a doubt that this is something that could only have a positive benefit. I haven't heard any negative comments from any town that's using it. And so my next step would be, with your support, I hope, to bring the information that we've gathered to the community between now and June so that people could ask any questions they have, make the information that I've collected available to people so they can review it, and so that we can address any concerns or issues that people might have with it before we get to town meeting. So I'd like to do that through Westford CAT and the League of Women Voters and maybe a public meeting or two so that, again, people could familiarize themselves with it more before town meeting. And then when we get to June, I don't think it's appropriate to impose this on town meeting by fiat. And I'll be asking for a consensus at that meeting before we go forward with this.
Questions or comments, folks? Scott and then John.
Well, I failed to thank the last committee in advance. So, you know, thanks, Angela, and to, you know, Mike and everyone for looking into this. So if we were to have the voters of June say they wanted to do it, are there options to rent them meeting by meeting? Do you buy them outright? I'm just thinking if, you know, there's pluses and minuses. If you buy them outright, you loan them, probably cheaper than renting. But if you lease them, you can take advantage of the best provider with the newest features as it evolves. Is that getting ahead of the horse here?
So a little bit, because I think at once, if the community decides this is the right way to go, then we could examine the cost more carefully. But just so you know, the information that I've gotten on that is that a system, to purchase a system, which many communities have been using for an excess of ten years now, costs, depending on how many devices we have, between $10,000 and $20,000. The per-use rental cost is between $1,000 and $3,000, again, depending on how many units we have. But those are options we could examine more carefully and get specific quotes and stuff. I just wanted to have that general information available for you tonight. Does that answer your question, Scott?
Perfectly. Thanks.
John?
I was just curious about some more detailed information. Do you have some more detailed information on what these things, how they work, what they look like? That sort of thing?
Absolutely. And I can send you the information I got from the three demos that we had. I will tell you that some of the devices are more complicated than others. I think personally, the simple device is best, that just has three or four buttons on it. Some of them have multiple buttons, and I think is a little confusing. They all work in a closed, now I'm really getting a little out of my area, so don't ask me questions about this. They all work in a closed system, so they're secure. And they, some, there are definitely systems that could work outside in the football field and in an overflow room if we had two rooms at Abbott. So I wouldn't come saying, I think we should do this if I hadn't at least had those questions answered in my mind to know that it would be appropriately applicable to our specific circumstances. And just so you know, there are over sixty communities in Massachusetts now that are using electronic vote tabulators at their town meetings. And most of them are open-town meeting.
Very good. Thanks.
Anita?
Could you clarify a little bit more about what sort of support you're looking for from us?
I think I just really want to know that, I mean, this is something that eventually is going to require a budget request, or if the community wants to do it, require a budget request and some money, and maybe a little more investigation into which system is appropriate. Of course, I make all the information I have available. So I just want to make sure that the select board is in favor of continuing to move forward with this.
Well, I certainly think that we should have Angela and her team, Steve and Tom and Mike, continue to explore and move forward with this because I somehow think that this is probably going to be the wave of the future and that more and more towns who have open, who have an open meeting are going to go to electronic tabulation. So it would be certainly my suggestion that we encourage and direct Angela and Tom and Steve and Mike to continue to pursue this and to start with community education because I do think the key to this is community education. As you said, Angela, through CAT, League of Women Voters, I think, public meetings at various locales so that you capture various folks and demographics. So.
I could say one more thing. If you remember the presentation right before me, the second item that they found in the town survey was that people thought town meeting was too long. And if anything is obvious, this is a town, this is a time saver. Electronic voting devices, instead of a count or when a two-thirds or other counted vote is required, is certainly a time saver.
Anita?
Yeah, I agree with Andrea that I would support the continuation of this exploration and the community education piece because I feel like there was a lot that we learned from the first time of things that we could do better. So I would support that, too.
Yeah, me too.
I think we have a consensus. Everybody's nodding Angela and thumbs up, so I believe you've got a consensus to continue to move forward.
That's great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you and thank all of you for really, really going after this and pursuing it and educating all of us this time around. So thanks. Okay, we are at our 7:25 PM item, which is to consider forming a monument committee to formalize a process to review monument requests and make recommendations to the select board, discuss a committee charge, and determine makeup of membership. Okay, so I think probably the first order of business is we probably, before we can formalize a process to review monument requests and make recommendations, I think we need to discuss a committee charge and determine the makeup of the membership of the committee, who can then go off and come back with us with their recommendations. So I know we had, we had several, in our packet, we had several from several options and several charges from various committees from different towns. A couple of them, I know, I don't think were quite appropriate or were too narrow or circumscribed. I remember, you know, one of them was for veterans. And while I certainly think that, you know, we have monuments for veterans, I think that we were all envisioning that this monument committee was going to be a bit broader than just veterans. So I'm not sure if we can bring up a couple of those, if we can look at those charges. And I don't know if.
I can do, yes.
If we can work off of those. Yeah, John?
I think the Lexington one looks like it's more appropriate than any of the others.
I can't remember which one that is, so. So, Mike, if you can bring that up. I know it is, but if Mike could bring it up, that would be helpful.
Let's see, this is called Samples from Other Towns. So let's. Is it Lexington?
Yes.
There we are.
Can you make it a little bigger, Mike?
Sure.
Thanks. So John and then Scott.
Yeah, what I liked about this one, it seemed to cover, you know, monuments and memorials. It wasn't just veterans. So I think it was more open-ended. It would cover many things. And I think we have to be looking at things like, you know, we've got the war memorials on the common. And as I understand it, in 2012, we kind of locked down the common and said that was closed for any other monuments. I'm not sure that's still effective, but I think that's what we did. And this would open it up to, you know, a wider range of things we could consider across town property. So that's what I liked about this one, and I thought it would be a good place to start.
Okay, Scott?
Not to disagree with my good friend, John, but, I mean, I, I mean, what I liked about Lexington was the criteria of membership, I think, number one is, we want someone in that capacity, maybe more than someone, but that should not be the, you know, the only requirement. But I do think it's important to acknowledge of town history because, you know, why are we doing this? Presumably, they've made some contribution to the town or perhaps, you know, a broader geography. But we also want somebody who knows how to, you know, design and build these things, which I don't. So I think the criteria is quite good. I might add to that, you know, some other representation that goes beyond veterans. But I guess my question, I guess, to the board is what we want this committee to do? Because my understanding is, you know, we already have an inventory of monuments. If you go to the website, you can see, you know, all of them listed. I think we're missing the most recent one to the, to the Pulevi monument, I think, is missing from this. But other than that, we have a Pulevi, excuse me, Pulevi monument is missing from this. Otherwise, I think they're all there. And in terms of, you know, maintenance, we kind of have that, I mean, it's informal now, but she, Westford Member is the fire department, you know, Dave Christian, we kind of have them already maintained. And then we, as the board of selectmen, we were a select board, we have the, you know, the job of approving the monuments or not. I don't want a committee doing that for us. So my perception was, we have a committee being built to set out the standards by which we would measure future decisions. So what should, you know, the monument encompass in terms of, you know, why is it important, where does it belong? You know, that kind of question, I think, is what that committee to work out. And it's a more narrow scope than what Lexington has. But that's just my interpretation of the comments two weeks ago.
I would agree with you, Scott. I, you know, we do have an inventory of monuments that, as you said, I think is almost up to date. And, you know, we have maintenance. We might want to formalize that. I don't know that we need the committee to do that. I think neither we or town howl can, you know, formalize, you know, who takes care of what. And I also agree that it's ultimately the select board's purview to approve monuments and not a committee. So, yeah, my thought also was the same as yours two weeks ago. yours two weeks ago, is that what we were really doing was establishing a committee that would, you know, set standards for, you know, when, where, and to whom a monument or memorial would be erected. So that was my understanding, or that was my thought process behind this.
And it's a very hard question. I thought through myself, you know, what do you think about? I mean, there's sort of obvious, can't explain, we already have a monument for now, but we have to have a, technically, the Ronan, you know, McKelley playground is a monument. Certainly, the Polari one is. So we need to think about something broader than just, you know, town service and military service, but to encompass things that are just, you know, kids who battle disease, you know, are heroes, too. And how do we, you know, formalize that? This would be a tough job for this committee.
Anita?
Yeah, I, as you both were talking, I was gravitating a little bit more towards the Lowell example of, you know, there's a lot of different things that they could, people could be considering under this committee. But then I started wondering, is this something that we could partner with in terms of like the Historic Commission or the Historical Society, like existing entities that might already have a lot of this expertise in-house or within their boards, and then just asking if they'd be willing to assist us with creating some of these policies, as opposed to creating a new committee?
I still think, though, you have to get a sort of a group of people together to create that, you know, Anita, whether you're pulling from the Historic Commission, or the Cultural Commission, or Westford Remembrance, or whomever, you know, we still need to pull together a group of people, so.
Okay.
So. We need to figure out a charge for this. I think, one, we need to figure out among us what the purpose is. And then, two, once we figure out the purpose, what the charge is. And then, once we have the charge, what the membership is. John?
Maybe we need a committee to figure that out.
No, we're not doing a committee to figure that out. No, 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 no.
This is a fairly complex issue in a lot of ways, you know, and it's not just like a Hall of Fame thing, or something that, you know, this, we've got to have some serious criteria, eligibility, a lot of things go into this. So, yeah, I'm concerned about that kind of detail, coming up with that, because just come up with a charge, yeah, I don't know. It's complex in my mind.
Well, it is. I'm not disagreeing. Anita?
Well, I guess I'll be curious to kind of hear everyone else's opinion about the Lowell charge, then, where it's to establish policies governing the naming or dedication of public spaces, whether they're inside or outside. It includes the standard application process, the dedication criteria, the design guidelines, insurance and maintenance requirements, kind of the whole shebang, and then they would make a recommendation to the Select Board.
Mike, I think, is pulling that up. Yes, he is. Scott?
I agree with Anita. I think this actually is really
Yeah.
pretty close. I'm not sure that we want to get into public spaces, because that's a whole, I think, different kettle of fish in terms of, you know, there's, those are monuments. That's, I think, a different, I mean, it's about schools, public spaces, and that should not be, I think, a monument committee, that should be a school committee kind of thing. So I would get rid of that, public spaces, but I do think that the notion of the, you know, memorials does pretty well meets that criteria, alternative application process, because we don't really have one. And of course, I think design guidelines are things that we kind of forget, and it'd be good to have that laid out, and especially, you know, the maintenance. We actually have volunteers to do it now, but, you know, going forward, if you're designed for low maintenance, you would be a happier town in 20 years. So I think it's pretty close, other than the changing of public spaces to town monuments.
How about?
Or town memorials.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, either monuments and memorials, or just memorials, if people think that.
Yeah, because a lot of them, if you mean, people, I don't think, if you, I would encourage our residents to go take a look at the town website, because all these memorials are, in fact, signs on roads, you know, or on little islands. So there's not any monument there, but it's a memorial usually with a person near where they lived when they were here. So I think you're right, memorials and monuments as opposed to public spaces.
Okay, so, and Ellen, I know you have your hand up. Just hang on. Okay, I do see you. So the purpose of the committee would be to establish policies governing the naming or dedication of monuments and memorials, whether they are inside public buildings or on public grounds. The policy would include a standard application process, naming or dedication criteria, design guidelines, insurance and maintenance requirements, renaming or rededication requests and associated fees. I don't think we need the last sentence.
You're right. And I guess, you know, within, you could have a monument or memorial within a public building. I would not want to remove the option for the, you know, the police department, the fire department to have a memorial inside their station to a firefighter, or a police officer. So I think I'd maybe make that just outdoor, because I don't, it might be an option, but I don't want to get to micromanaging our town buildings either.
Okay, so we could just do it outdoors. So spaces on, outdoors on public grounds?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, John?
I know the Conservation Commission approves benches and things like that on conservation land, and they have done it in the past, and you'll see them around. And so they have taken that authority on what they kind of oversee. So it might, I don't know whether you want to include or mention of the Conservation Commission this or not, or exclude the conservation land, or have this committee do it all.
Okay, that's actually, it's a good point, because we do have benches out in conservation land and dedications on conservation land for particular people as well. Jody?
Yeah, I think you do have to be careful, because you don't have care and custody of schools or library. So I would think it would be properties under the care and custody of the Select Board, unless, well, unless you want to include boards appointed by you and me in that there's recreation properties, you know, parks, conservation. So just understand that.
Scott?
Sorry, power error.
Oh, okay. Okay, can we, Ellen has her hand up and has been waiting patiently. Can you unmute Ellen?
Yeah, Ellen, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you very much. I'd like to raise two points, if I could.
Yep.
The first has to do with the wording that is in the Lexington policy that I would ask the Select Board to look closely at, that one of the charges of this new group would be, quote, "reviewing requests for new public memorials." That is, a family or an organization would come to this group with that group's idea, with the donor's idea. I think that's very different than having a monument committee who feels that their charge is to come up with ideas for what new monuments should be, or where new monuments should be. I don't think that, I would hope that that would not, the second would not be the avenue that the Select Board was coming, planning to go down. The first group is what the 2000 Monument Committee was for. The Select Board found itself with several requests from families and from individuals for monuments or markers. And it was the Monument Committee who reviewed those and determined criteria as to whether or not those would or would not be appropriate for the town of Westford. And leading into what John Cunningham said about, it's the Conservation Commission that has reviewed placement powers for benches, for example, at East Boston Camps, one of the things the 2000 Committee did was, we familiarized ourselves with town boards and committees that already had plans in place and wanted benches, or perhaps trees, on their properties. So we would direct families to say, you know, you might want to talk to the Cemetery Commission. Pine Grove had just opened, and they were looking for people to donate benches, to donate trees. Same with the Conservation Commission and East Boston Camps, which was newly a part of our lives. And so that was one of the roles here, was to coordinate, okay, who in town is looking for a bench, or a tree, or some kind of a monument. So we were, what should I say, we were the sounding board, but it was never our role, and the Select Board at that time, the selectmen, did not ask us to find monuments that needed, that we felt should be erected. We simply responded to requests that came to us. So I think that that wording, please, that's in the Lexington policy, that the committee is charged with reviewing requests for new public memorials, is an important distinction that will set the guidelines for what this group should do, and make it no broader than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
I agree with Ellen. So actually, in the, in the language from Lowell, where it says, include a standardized application process or create that, I definitely thought, in my mind, that that would include reviewing applications as opposed to seeking monuments or memorials to erect. And I do not anticipate that this committee would meet very frequently once those guidelines are in place. I would be surprised if we're getting tons of requests for monuments. I don't know. I feel like it doesn't happen very often. So anyways, I agree with you, Ellen.
Okay, so I think what, I think what I would recommend is, you know, we've got a couple of suggestions here. You know, we have the, both the Lexington and the Lowell charges to sort of work off of, and that we, I'm willing to take a stab at putting together a charge for this newly about to be created committee and bring it back to, for the Select Board to consider at our next meeting. Does that make sense, or do you want to try and do it now? Scott?
I would enthusiastically endorse your.
John?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we need to get something in front of us, maybe combines the two and reflects what Ellen said, and move from there, because I think we need something more. I wouldn't be comfortable cobbling it together tonight. Nancy Cook on tonight, at all?
She is.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Westford Remembers, because she's had a big, they've had a big impact on the memorials around town, I think, and some of the things that we've done. They've done some nice things. I'd kind of like to hear her thoughts.
Okay, well, Nancy, John is putting you on the spot. Up to you whether or not you'd like to respond, okay? I believe she's going to, so if you unmute her, Mike?
Yep. Nancy?
Hi there.
Hi.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
No, I've read through both the Lowell and the Lexington, and I agree, Andrea, putting those together into a workable document is exactly what we need. Westford Remembers has, has talked about policies and procedures for doing this for a long time. And, you know, there are not a lot of requests, there's very few. Mr. Polari was the last one that came before us, and actually, Jody called us to meet with him. So, yeah, I think that's the way to go. I think, as Scott said, some members, different members from town, different boards in town put together a committee. I think that's perfect.
All right. We will do that, and we will bring this back at our next meeting. So, thank you, everybody. All right, we are now at our 7:50 PM item, which is Old and New Business. So we have a request from the Wilder Company for a letter of support to extend the time period for two liquor licenses for Westford Valley Marketplace at 174 Littleton Road, which were previously approved by the legislature, one license to be issued within a year after January 30th, 2023, and a second to be issued within two years after January 30th, 2023. Is Paul Alphen with us? I don't see him.
We do have somebody with their hand up.
Jody has her hand up. Oops. Oh, Kelly Burke, wait a minute, is that?
Kelly Burke is here, along with Paige Quigley.
Okay, so Kelly Burke had her hand up, so Kelly.
Hi, I'm Kelly Burke. I'm Vice President of Velvet Services for the Wilder Companies.
Okay.
Yes, Paul couldn't be here tonight. So we are requesting a letter of support from the board. Essentially, just by way of background, the Citizens Petition was approved at town meeting back in October of 28, I'm sorry, 2019, and obviously, right on the doorstep of the COVID-19 pandemic. So we have been lucky enough and fortunate enough to have one extension of the timeframe. However, you know, the pandemic has just crushed the restaurant business. You know, at this point right now, it's a struggle just to get staff. Many of them are closing. So we continue diligent efforts to attract a quality restaurant, but we respectfully request an extension to those liquor licenses as we try to get through this pandemic and restaurants start to, you know, start expanding again.
Okay, John Cunningham, John, you have your hand up. Do you have a question?
No, ma'am, I was fiddling around with this thing.
Okay, all right. Scott?
I have a question, but just, you know, I think of a day job, which is forecasting construction markets. I would agree with Ms. Burke that uncertainty around anything involving lodging restaurants, you know, retail has been so high that no one's making long-term plans right now. So I think it might be, I think, extension is justified.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I mean, you know, there was a piece on the news last night just about how many restaurants are closing and, you know, being unable to make it. And so I think if, you know, I support this, and if we can do this for Wilder, and perhaps in sometime in the next two years, you know, those spaces will be filled again, then that's good for everybody. So is there a motion to support the extensions?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will get, I guess you need a letter from us? Is that correct, Kelly? She must have gone off.
I, I.
That's okay. I believe they need a letter from us. So, Jody, we'll get a letter together, right? Thank you.
Yes, we'll get it out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have a request for comments on the Plain Road Sidewalk Extension Project. Paul Starrett, hello there.
Madam Chair, Paul Starrett, Town Engineer, working on more sidewalks, one of the Select Board goals, and in combination with the Pedestrian Safety Committee. We had a meeting last night with the committee and residents. Your Scott Hazleton was there as well, and it was a very helpful meeting, picked up a lot of important information from the Butters, and we've heard from some who have called me and sent emails. And we've heard from some who have called me and sent emails. We'd like to get our residents involved in the projects as much as possible to help us identify issues that we can address. This is a pretty straightforward sidewalk. If you want to see the plan, Mike does have them, or if you haven't seen them already. Yeah, that's perfect. So we're going from Villanova Drive, where on the left part of your screen, where Grassy Pond Conservation Area is, and up to the Nutting Road intersection, where our last Plain Road sidewalk project ended. Our goal is to continue it down to connect all of the existing sidewalk network up to the Grassy Pond Conservation Area. And a look ahead, we eventually, with cooperation from Town Meeting and the Pedestrian Safety Committee and the Board of Select Board, we'd like to get down all the way to the intersection of Plain and Depot, but that's at another time. Just quickly, if you want to go through some of these slides, Mike, our goal is to put it on the north side of Plain Road as you look at it here. And, or the east side, the west side, sorry, at the Grassy Pond parking lot, which is hard to see there, but it would meander into the conservation area at Grassy Pond. This is a subject of, a topic of discussion at the Conservation Commission tomorrow night so that they can opine or give us their thoughts on the sidewalk, meandering into their property just a little bit. You can proceed, Mike. We'll need some temporary easements to accomplish this. We'll, of course, be paying attention to all the driveway crossings. The red line you see there is the existing public right of way, which is always a good lesson to see as we move forward. It meanders, it's not, there aren't always straight lines, equal distances. Why don't you go ahead, Mike? We have, we've designed at this stage a couple of crosswalks at intersections like here at Stony Brook. There's another one coming up as well. Advance along here. Again, meeting with and talking to residents, we've identified a couple of accessibility issues that is very helpful for us to know about so that we can pay particular attention to the details. And then finally, we get here to the, where the existing network ended on Plain Road. And we are going to take advantage of this project to make some adjustments at the intersection of Nutting Road and Plain Road, essentially doing what we did at Main Street on Depot Street in Maine, where we will take advantage of a traffic island here to give pedestrians a refuge as they're crossing. We've pulled the sidewalk out a little bit to shorten the distance and slow vehicles down now that we're introducing pedestrians in this area. And then the next screen will just give you the, I should point out here before you leave here, Mike, that the proposed permit on the left is, was an interesting discovery that we kind of creeped on to some private property over the years in making this intersection more friendly. That resident has been friendly to the project and welcomes the opportunity to grant an easement so that we can straighten out where our road is versus where the property line is. And then the next screen, Mike, just gives us a little bit of a timeline. We've met with Pedestrian Safety. We're here with you this evening for your comments and feedback. We hope to plan, we plan to finish up the plans, the specifications, the budget, the estimated budget through the summer. And then we will hopefully, one of the options for us is to go to Special Town Meeting in October to request some funds for acquiring the easements that we need. And then that will have us ready for construction the following summer. That's where we are right now. We've gotten some good feedback so far, I think, to contribute toward a better project, and we welcome your comments and feedback as well.
So Paul, a meeting with the residents last night, was the overall feedback positive?
Yes, yeah, last Thursday night, the Pedestrian Safety Committee meeting, we met with them, and I would say that we got some good feedback. No, no, and Scott can speak to this as well. He was there. You know, there was, didn't hear any opposition or nobody that was opposed to the project.
Are there any particular, either you or Scott, any particular challenges that we faced with this sidewalk?
Yeah, we have asked Town Council to look into the disposition of the Grassy Pond Conservation Land to make sure that we don't trespass into some Article 97 lands. We don't think from our plain reading of the deeds and so forth that it's going to be an issue, but we'll cross that T and dot that I, make sure that we are doing the right things. If we needed to, we could pull that meandering sidewalk back into the layout, and we'll get a better idea what the Conservation Commission's thoughts are tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
I would just agree with Paul that the comments were constructive and, you know, largely positive. I think the only two negatives were, one is, you know, why can't it go further down to Depot? Well, we'd like that eventually, but we can't do that right now. And secondly was, you know, some concern about the crosswalk locations relative to turns and speeds and one person with disability that would probably deal with extra time in crossing. So, but those are things that you can work out with engineering. So I would say that was positive and good learnings that, between our engineer and the consultant, we can incorporate as a plan.
Great. Any comments from the board? John?
I got a question just on funding, the design funds. Do you have all the design funds? And what is that going, what's that going to eventually cost? And what do you think the sidewalk project will cost? And how does this fit in with the priorities for other sidewalks that the committee is looking at?
So yes, we, Town Meeting already gave us the funds that we need for the design that we're doing now. We will have a construction estimate shortly. Once we get all of our comments in and everything has been addressed, we'll be able to dial into that number for Capitol Committee conversations or however it's decided to fund the construction. And I can't speak for the Pedestrian Safety Committee. I know that from past conversations that this particular stretch of sidewalk has been a priority. It, it, it's important to note that when this is complete and when our ongoing Oak Hill project is completed, it will be part of the single largest sidewalk network in town. You'll be able to walk from Grassy Pond through an accessible path all the way up to Makepeace Road, which is, I haven't calculated the distance, but you might want to pack a lunch if you go on that hike.
Scott?
But you could, you could bike it too, I mean, which is.
Biking, yeah.
No, I would just observe that, to join you, the question about priorities. So the Pedestrian Safety Committee had identified, really, I think, three priorities. One of them is, you know, Carlisle Road, which we've already addressed separately because of the sheer traffic volumes there. Secondly was Plain Road because it's the most popular sidewalks in town. So I think that it was always been our second priority. And then almost a tie is Robinson Road just because of the proximity to schools, but that's a little more challenging for me, engineering, and it's not quite a unanimous decision of part of the neighborhood. So that's, you know, number three, but this is certainly number two.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, Paul, thank you very much. And I, you know, looking at the plans, actually, from my perspective, this, relatively speaking, this looks like one of the easier sidewalks to install.
Biggest jinx in the history of select.
I know, I know. But anyway.
And we will continue to work with the Butters as we always do, right up through the end, and pay attention to those details.
Right, right. And I do think it's exciting that at some point in the future, you know, we really will have a sidewalk the entire length of Plain Road. And, you know, that was something we started years ago, doing it incrementally. And it will be exciting when really it's all finished. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
First, I was thinking about, you know, for the other side of town too, if you do Boston Road.
Yep.
When they have sidewalks from, you know, Tabox Senior Center up to, you know, Boston Road, up to the town center. If that one missing link going down Depot to the road tracks would be the only thing of preventing an entire town-wide sidewalk system, at least across town sidewalk system.
I like a challenge, so.
There you go.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we have a request from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to appoint Catherine Hinkle as a full member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a request from the Town Clerk to appoint election officers for terms expiring on July 31st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Any board reports or updates? I don't see any. We have minutes for approval. We have executive session minutes from February 4th, 2022, and February 8th, 22, for approval but not for release. Is there a motion to approve but not release?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Jody, you're up, Town Manager's report.
Thank you. So I have, I'm requesting to appoint Assistant Town Manager Eric Hydeman as Acting Town Manager from Monday, February 28th through Monday, March 14th.
Is there a motion to approve?
Just to be clear, you're in town for the snowstorm, and he takes over afterwards, right? I, I, I'm actually approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then a request to approve the following grants. We got another Green Communities grant in the amount of $34,680 to fund many initiatives, which I will not read, but are listed in your agenda, on your agenda. And NIMCOG to provide 130 hours of staff to assist with our housing production plan and brownfield inventory. Purchase orders Richie and Clapper for a commercial lawnmower in the amount of $21,815.60 for the cemetery department, Presidio for Cisco Firewalls and related services for the town's network in the amount of $33,000 from technology. Contracts F.G. Sullivan Drilling Company for cleaning and redevelopment of the Howard Road and Nutting Road wells in the amount of $54,237 requested by the water department. And tie-in bond for professional engineering services for the replacement of the Depot Street drinking well, drinking water well in the amount of $25,000 as requested by the water department.
You know, Jody, I know you didn't want to read all of the grants, but I do think it's, I won't read them all either, but I do think it's important to say that many of them are related to sustainability and energy savings, LED lighting upgrades, the partial funding to implement a fully electrical carrier vehicle for the school department, and the partial funding to implement two hybrid trucks for the DPW. So I just want to mention that. You know, we continue to pursue these grants. We continue to pursue our goal of becoming more energy efficient and sustainable in the town. So I did just want to mention that.
Sure.
But now with that, is there a motion to approve the grants, contracts, and purchase orders?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. Is there a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
So moved.
I was gonna say, gosh, you don't really want me to read all that correspondence.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, and last, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
The second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Good night, everybody. Good night, Westford. Everybody stay safe, be well, and be careful in our storm that's coming. Thanks, have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.